Three times more than NASA would have considered a success. And I kind of think that we should have been celebrating in the streets for this, right? Now, it was at a time when we're, you know, getting ready for midterm elections and the playoffs were in place and Texas A&amp;M football was in the news. But the reality, what an amazing human achievement, inspiring, right? And again, I think cause for us to be dancing in the streets, not just here, but in the world, because it was something that was for humanity, right? And I pose that digression because on our agenda tonight is a new STEAM club we're asking the board to approve. And we have spoken about the importance of doing partnerships to advance opportunities and interest for our kids. We have a wonderful partnership with the Manufacturing Resource Center who will be coming in and providing local businesses the opportunity to connect with our kids. They will actually be paying us for it. We have a remarkably talented faculty member Jonathan Pepperato of robotics fame who will be overseeing this. And in a way, Southern Lehigh School District will be playing its small part in diverting asteroids from, you know, the destruction of the planet. And I thought, what an inspiring and thoughtful and wonderful thing that we're doing. And I think from time to time, those types of activities need to be highlighted because they are often overlooked as we are so busy in our, you know, day-to-day operation of the really amazing things that are happening in our school district, in our nation, and in our world. So that's my digression. I strongly recommend we vote for that club now, having that set up. And so now on to my typical update on construction. We have on our agenda tonight a contract to approve with EI Associates. The Facility Committee has done great work in requesting EI to refine their work and will soon be beginning a HVAC construction, a very thoughtful HVAC construction project on the high school. So the board will be asked to approve that tonight. And just a brief update on our stadium. Our contractor, Athletic Fields of America, is ordering supplies and gearing up. We're going through a few administrative details to check off, and we do hope to be beginning construction soon. So thank you, Mrs. Reinhardt, for the report and for allowing my digression onto the DART program.
Dr. Tringle, do you want a question on the...
We'll vote on all of those together.
Okay. So if we're voting on that, do you want to maybe offer a word or two on the PCCD grant?
The PCCD grant was submitted in August. It was actually due August 31st, but one of the items was, it was accepted with the caveat because it's a technology resource which is Navigate, which is supplied in the document for the board president to sign, just stipulates what we'll be using that for. And that's per the statute in the guidelines that we need that signed and approved upon the board in order to move forward. We currently use Navigate for many modules for school safety, threat assessments, behavioral assessments, our system itself to utilize fire drills and log all of those fire drills and much more. So that's what we'll be using part of that grant money to supply for the next two years.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the PCCD grant? And the STEAM pilot project with MRC?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. With the STEAM club, I hope that we do our best to market it and see a very diverse group going through it.
Absolutely.
There's a bit of a bias in some of the sciences and other areas. We've seen it with some of the clubs that have come before us. And I'd love to see, especially having two young ladies myself, they're not so young anymore, more females getting into that area. And I think it's an important thing. And quite frankly, I will admit, often my wife should love to hear me say this, is a lot smarter when it comes to mathematics and sciences and figure stuff out. So I'd love to see more inclusion and more pulling individuals into that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Along those same lines, I just wanted to also remind everyone, especially those on facilities, that we had way back when we were talking about the Performance Arts, Performing Arts Center, which unfortunately, we're not able to afford at this time. There was also a plan at that point to revamp space into STEAM-based learning, you know, spaces. So just something to keep in mind as I continue to ask for some, you know, modification or some type of way to improve upon the facilities. You know, for example, our band room right now has, you know, mold and mildew, and it has a dehumidifier running at all times, which isn't great for instruments, for example. So just, you know, something to keep in mind.
Okay.
All in favor?
Just one other thing is, what's great about this is to see it's STEAM, and we used to call a lot of things STEM. And to that end, what Dr. Serene was saying, to include the arts, that A for STEAM is kind of a big step in the thinking about this programming district-wide, and I see it continuing to come up, and that's really encouraging to me. And just, I want to say that Mr. Pip, Mr. Pepperato, is really a great teacher and a great extracurricular coach and advocate, and has a way of pulling all sorts of kids in too. And so I have great, I have great hopes for what he especially can do in this and taking this on. So Mr. Lissette, yeah, like I hear what you're saying, and I think, I think we're really setting ourselves up well with Mr. Pip to do that.
And just the HVAC project will go a long way in addressing some of those very critically important circulation that really is driving the initiative, because we recognize there are problems that have to be addressed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motions are approved. Mr. Pepe.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, the bills list pretty standard fare. We have transportation is one of the larger payments on there, brandy wine. We also have 127,000 Norman Busk. I would like to say we're really appreciative of all the extra efforts that was put in by both transporters to ensure that we got all of our students to spend from school and home. Additionally, in the bills list, we had fire suppression work that was completed by Kissler O'Brien for $10,050. That's sprinkler annual inspection as well as fire suppression. And Petroleum Traders Corporation, $37,000, has to do with the diesel bid for transportation. Upper Salkin, you'll see $50,000, security officer. And that's pretty much it on the bills list unless there's any other questions about bills this month. The October Treasuries Report, happy to report that we are up to date on both the Treasuries and Investment Report. And as promised, the Investment Report is starting to show a much better upgrade on the actual monies that we're making on interest rates. And then lastly, what's important in the beginning of the budget cycle is the resolution that we have for the Act One Index. The Act One Index for this year is set at 4.1%, and our resolution is stating that we are not, under any circumstance, going to exceed that index. And I can tell you right now, we're not going to be close. So we should be in really great shape as we start putting our budget together this year.
And we also have a motion for the library. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, that was a discussion that came up with the board at the last meeting. And as I stated, that we had the allocation. However, we have not made a payment on the first quarter. Each quarter's payment is $17,850. So this motion is to approve that first installment payment of $17,850. And while there's additional conversations that are going to continue to be had, subsequent requests for dispersment will be presented to the board in January, March, and June, which is in accordance with the budgeting.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for items contained within 8A through D?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
I...
Go ahead, Ms. Game.
I just had a... No, it's okay. Go ahead.
Do you have a comment? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those motions are approved.
I have a quick question. Is there any way for the future payments to be put on the bills lists like they would normally? Or do they have to come and ask for it every time like they did last time? Can we just put it on the bills list like it was supposed to be?
Once it gets approved, what we were seeking was the decision of the board as whether or not to make the payment and to what amount. Now that that's been determined, it will go on to the bills list, and it will be in a check. Now, due to the timing, at this point, I'm not going to hold the bill for another month. So I will issue the check, but it will go on to the next bills list. And then when the board approves the bills list, that will have already been paid out.
Okay, I had only asked, the last payment, I had no idea that it was due. I didn't realize that it was kind of, it was passed.
Because prior to the discussion, it would have automatically been on the bills list.
Right.
And it would have been keyed up for the quarter.
Okay. So then the next installment then is due in what, January, you said?
That's correct.
And that'll be, it'll go on the bills list?
Not until it's board-approved.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Emily gave it here. It's being pulled out. So in the, my recollection in the past is that this would be paid quarterly but go on the bills list, not be a separate line item. Going forward, are we, is this going to appear on the agenda every quarter in this form? Or will it appear as an item on the bills list?
That's wholly up to the board. But at this juncture, that's where we're at.
At this juncture, it appears as if this will be an individually voted-on item as it appears tonight.
Correct.
Thanks for the clarification.
And I think that was how I kind of framed it for the board. But, you know, whatever the board would like as far as the approach, administrator's very happy to accommodate.
My only question for the board then would be, why is this a bill that we are calling out as a line item in particular? Like, I don't, right now, I mean, I don't, if there's a reason to do that, I just don't see the reason why we're pulling this individual bill out as a line item. That's all. That's why the question, that's why I was curious about. So I just, I guess I'd ask the board if this needs to be pulled out as a line item and discussed, and why.
I mean, I think I favor doing it that way. Good chunk of money. It's a, it's another organization that we're gathering information about, that we choose to support as a board. I think in the current state, we're going to hear from what, Lower Salkin and Upper Salkin tonight. So I think there's just a lot going on that this board needs to learn about as we decide, you know. And so I think it's completely appropriate that, and I certainly was in support of the idea that we, since I think they kind of depend on quarterly payment, and since that's what we were talking about doing, that that gets dispersed now. But at the same time, I'm looking, I really personally am looking forward to gathering greater information about this lower Salkin issue, for one. Two, the impact that might, you know, we've heard from the library at the last meeting that talks about, you know, they believe, a lot of it with, I'm interested to learn more about the, was it the Commonwealth Library? I think I'm getting the wrong acronym, but an organization that I would, or a...
The higher authority kind of thing?
Yeah, higher authority, within the state that I was completely unaware of. I'd like to go, I would like to go work for them somehow, if it's possible, I suspect. But, so there's just, I think, for me, a lot of questions that I would like to have answered that, you know, may impact, you know, the possible funding in that, you know, I don't know, it'll help us, I think, understand better. Certainly, they talked about staffing size, the impact of Lower Salkin on them. There's just a lot going on. So I would prefer to sort of learn about those things and then vote on the funding quarterly. I think that seems appropriate from my perspective, just because I think there's a lot of flux right now. If there wasn't for that, you know, if we kind of knew it was a general normal year going on at the library, I would feel a little bit better to just say, yep, you know, kind of write a check. But that's just my perspective on it. But that, I would be in favor of continuing to have an update and pay out quarterly for the time being.
I got to say, for that reason, I kind of agree with you about Jeff about it's nice the public knows and sees where our money is going, and it's kind of nice for everyone to realize that, yes, we support and fund the library and our community. So for that reason, I think it's kind of nice to see it on there. I was just curious about what the board's thinking was about the change. I knew what my thinking was, but I didn't know why the change was. But, you know, I kind of think that's nice. I also think to that end, maybe perhaps we should consider making a line item for LTRC's contribution as well. Anything that, you know, the bills list is a bills list, and you think you're paying for the district, but those other external ways in which we support the community and how tax dollars are being sent outside of, you know, crayons and computers and lights and plumbing, that's kind of nice to see for that. That would be my reason to put some of those other, just helps the community, you know, see how various institutions in our community are kind of intricately woven together in a web. You wouldn't necessarily think the district has anything to do with the public library or the, or LTRC, the community college. But for that reason, I think it's kind of nice for everybody to see. That would be, that would be my reason.
I'm not opposed to that logic or way of thinking. I just would ask, because it seems like this time it kind of went past when we normally would disperse it. So, you know, if we could perhaps just schedule the discussion or approval of the quarterly payment, I guess, in advance of when it's usually expected, like the timing wise.
I think that's, that's a good suggestion. Okay, any other?
I think that's a great, that's a great suggestion. I would certainly support that, and I appreciate what everyone has said here. I think part of this discussion, you know, and the direction that Mr. Pepe received was when we had voted on the budget back in, I guess it was July. I think only five members were present during that vote, so maybe that's why something, you know, that was, that became part of that discussion, because it was a question that we had on how that library funding came to be.
Is that when that question came up? Because in the preliminary budget, that question didn't come up.
I think it was in the final vote.
That is correct.
I think that's why. So I just, I didn't want it to make, I didn't want it to make it seem like this was something that Mr. Pepe did on, you know, on his own. This was actually at the direction of the board during the final budget vote, I believe.
Yeah, I concur with that as well. That's, that's what happened, and we did not have everybody here as well. So, yeah.
Just for clarification through the board president, this was a little unique, because at the time in which the budget was struck, there was no definitive decision from the board as to whether or not they wanted to fund at that level. So in order to not hold up the budget that needed to get approved, it was approved contingent upon the later discussion by the board as to what they were going to fund. Whereas like LTRC brought up, becomes a contractual obligation. Once their budget is struck, then we are required to put, and all bills go through the bills list. So the only reason why this came up the way it did was there was really no decision made by the board, and it had already passed or gone over the first quarterly installment. And through the discussions, when the library came, if you remember, the library director pointed out to the board that we did not make our first quarterly payment, and that's where the discussion started with development of a resolution as to acknowledge and make the payment for that first quarter. Okay?
Sure, sure.
So it's a little unusual, but it's totally up to the will of the board as a whole.
And in that budget discussion, I remember you explaining that it's in the budget, but just like other budget items are in the budget, they don't necessarily have to be spent as such.
Correct. We're not obligated to make the payment to the library.
Right, just as if we budget, you know, a grand for crayons. We aren't obligated to spend a grand on crayons. Same, same thing, even though it's in the budget.
Mr. Pepe, I think too, just to the definition of it, the community college is a contractual obligation, whereas this is a donation, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah, sure. My only point was just, it's kind of nice for the public to see where the money's going.
Okay, Mr. Pepe, do you want to review the motion regarding support services and mechanical upgrades?
Sure, thank you. As the superintendent already pointed out, this is a project that's been in the works. EI Associates has come before the Facilities Committee twice now on this particular project. They were asked to provide additional detail beyond the scope of what we're actually contracting them to do at this point. So what they did is looked at a holistic assessment of the entire building for all the HVAC areas and components, and started to schedule out priority basis as to whether or not things are an immediate need, which we defined as priority one and priority two. Priority one is the chiller plant. Priority one B is the tech ed RTU replacement. Priority two A is media center HVAC replacement. And priority two B is the administrative boardroom that we're in and HVAC replacement and also a portion of the office area. So with that said, that's what's before you tonight. The other priorities were determined to be anywhere from three to five years out or five to 10 years out. The good news that came from their report is that our in-house maintenance team has been doing a great job of doing preventative maintenance, and that's, you know, really credited to Mike and his team to make sure that they're extending the life. And the report out to us from the professional engineers, where many of our units are already well beyond the expected life and yet still operational and in good condition. So that was the focus of the work to define the priorities.
How much of this is funded through the grant?
Good point. 1.5 million of this project is going to go to the ARP-ESR funds that we've been setting aside and waiting for this project. That was another reason for the focus on, you know, the HVAC project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the proposal for October 4th for the HVAC system? Any other comments or questions?
Just quickly on the exceptions in this agreement. There's some discussion there is about as-built drawings being excluded from their scope. I just wondered if you had any insight from them on that, why they wouldn't provide as-built drawings with it? Is that going to be a separate issue if we need it?
Any of the work they do, they have to provide the as-bills.
Okay. It's just that in here, it says it's excluded, so that's, that was just my question there. And I apologize for not getting to this sooner. I happened to see this just before the meeting, so.
Yeah, and once they, once they develop the bid specs and it's bid, whoever wins the bid's going to have to produce the as-bills.
Okay, so they'll, the other contractor will be doing it. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Mr. Pigeon.
Thank you, Madam President. First part of the HR report or the HR agenda is the first reading of our three board policies. As you are all aware, we had the board policies reviewed in the workshop. Since that point, the solicitor has had an opportunity to review the board policies. She made some minor adjustments on wording. No real new information was put into the board policies. So board policy 236.1, threat assessment, nothing really changed in that, again, except for some reformatting. Board policy 805.2, school security personnel. In this policy, we did revert back to the PSBA policy and included school police officer and security officer, along with a resource officer, so that we're covered just in case. So that was an addition, but that was outside of the solicitor. And again, she didn't really, or the solicitor didn't really make any changes on top of that. And then policy 808 on food service, again, it was just some reformatting issues moving forward. Does anybody have any questions?
So did you, from the, from when we read it in workshop, did you make any changes after our conversations in workshop?
Yes, and they've been updated, and they're in the policies that are here.
I see that there, I remember Mrs. Reinhardt had said about marking them up like in red or highlighting the changes, because now I'm reading it, and it all looks good, but I can't at all tell what was changed and what wasn't changed.
So I took the red out because it's the first reading. If you want me to keep the red in from now on, moving forward, I can gladly do that for first reading. But then it gets confusing on cross-offs and red language, so on and so forth. But I'll do whatever the board wants me to.
I like to, personally, maybe people would disagree with me, but I like to see the changes, because it's hard to, like now I'm looking at it, and I have no idea what was changed and what was left as is, and I like to see the changes.
Kyle, I would agree with you. I would also like to see the changes. I think that's a good, good point.
I think if it gets confusing, you can probably eliminate maybe the cross-offs, because there's a lot, and just put in red what's new and different, if that's confusing to folks, what we're being voted on. Because I agree, if the public is going to look at this, it might get confusing with the cross-outs. But, yeah, I agree about the red.
Why don't we try it with both the cross-outs and the red and see how it goes with the first reading next time? Okay?
No problem.
Thank you.
For this one, are we okay with these as the first reading?
I think we can move forward with these.
And then next first reading.
Because from what I understand, the solicitor did not make substantial changes. They were mostly wording and grammatical changes.
The other option might be to have both, only that I do kind of understand the need to sort of, what you're voting on is, you know, you're not voting on red and cross-offs. So it's a little, I don't see why there wouldn't be a possibility of including in either board material or even in the notes for the meeting, but both, just so you can kind of look back and see what happened and then have the actual one we're voting on.
Great idea.
But I think it's a bad idea to vote on crossed-out ones. It's, right.
Yes.
Okay. That's a nice print, I think, Jeff. No, no.
Okay, that's, that's great. Do you want to continue with the practicum affiliation for school nurses?
Sure. The next motion is for an affiliation agreement with the Eastern School of Nursing. We have somebody in our HR report that is requesting to do an internship as a school nurse. So we have an affiliation agreement for you to approve, and pending that approval, we'll have somebody starting an internship with us after the winter break, so not until January. So we have a little time with that person. They are on the agenda tonight, but if anything needs to change, we can make those maneuvers. And I think it's a very valuable piece, having somebody that is doing school nursing, wanting to do practicums here in Southern Lehigh, because as you know, it's a very hard-to-fill position. So that's the next motion. And then the final motion is the board report. The board report is, or has appointments listed. We have two administrative appointments, five certified staff appointments, and five classified staff, oh, I'm sorry, three certified staff, five classified staff appointments. We have our homebound instructor, extra pay for extra duty, and the volunteer coaches, substitutes. We have four substitute teachers coming up for a vote tonight, along with subs in other areas. And then we have the unpaid internship also for our appointments. We have a resignation of a certified staff member, and then we also have a graduate increment increase request.
I had a question more about the substitute teachers. I mean, I know we've discussed this before and that there's, and you struggle sometimes, it seems, with filling secondary open slots on a daily basis, because I am hearing, you know, I don't know if it's really going up or if it's just word of mouth, but it seems that a lot of the high school classes are ending up in the auditorium. So, you know, I just, quality of education obviously is diminished in that situation.
I spoke to the building principal about that, and he said that they have done everything in their power to maintain the classrooms as they are. There has been one or two times, he said, and those are his words, not mine, that they have had to move classes to the auditorium.
Is there any official way that we can document this? Because it seems like it's been going on for a while now. You know, I would hope at this point that COVID-related illnesses are, you know, diminishing. There's other illnesses, obviously. People are getting sick in the winter, but I just feel like there's no good way for us to, I think it's good if we could keep an eye on it in a more, I guess...
Absolutely. And just so you, just so you know, I do have a report. It's a year-to-date report. It's not a this week or last week report on the substitute issue. I truly don't believe we have an absence issue.
Right.
We have a sub issue where we don't have enough subs to fill the absence. Our teachers come to work.
No, I would imagine they do. But I guess, do absences or get excused or approved on the basis, they don't get approved, obviously, on the basis of having a substitute or someone to fill the spot, right? So I, just throwing it out, you know, generally, that's never a great way to go about, right?
Well, you can't approve when someone's sick.
I know, I know. Exactly. So that's the thing, when you have approved absences without a definite fill-in, and then you have illness on top of that, it's going to compound the issue. So, I mean, I certainly, I don't think that anyone's doing anything wrong. It just, you had mentioned before that, you know, we're having some issues with, you know, that substitute teachers tend to want to go towards the primary as opposed to the secondary space. So I don't know if there's a way to regulate that in any way or divert people towards more necessary.
About a week ago, or maybe 10 days ago, Dr. Mann and myself had a conversation, and I don't know if anybody noticed, but we posted a substit, we always have our substitute posted. But right now, I have substitute posted specifically for the high school.
Okay, so that's good. I just didn't know if there was a way to...
And we're looking to assign somebody to the And we're looking to assign somebody to the high school four days a week.
Okay.
To fill in last second type of absence.
Right, okay, that's good. I just wondered if there was any.
So we are trying to combat that in different ways.
Okay, okay, thanks.
But yeah, I think it's an issue also.
Yeah, and just word of mouth, I would agree. And perhaps I think part of the way of thinking about this is maybe teachers wear a lot of hats throughout the day, and I think maybe we're not so much looking at illnesses as teachers have required meetings and other places to fill in. But I think, I would say word of mouth, I'm getting the same sense that there are classes, more classes in the auditorium that we would necessarily, you know, think are happening. But then it is difficult for, to grab, you know, a substitute for a class when you have a 45-minute meeting or an hour, you know, different, different things that pull teachers in different directions. And I think maybe part of that is also what the, what the cause is, and we're just so used to thinking about kids in large rooms that when we're sensitive to it, we kind of forget that teachers also have to do that and we have to provide substitute coverage, you know, for that. We're just more aware of it as a community now than we were before, more sensitive to it. But yeah, I have, I have the same word-of-mouth community sense, and whether or not that's the community just wants their kids in classrooms and, or not, I'm hearing the same thing, but maybe it's that meeting coverage thing. But it'd be great to find a way to track it, to help parents and community members understand as well. But thanks, we know you're doing a great job trying to find those subs and get classroom coverage where you can. Yeah, it's a continual struggle.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Keep fighting the fight because we're still, we're still like, ah, really want those kids in those classrooms. All right, thanks.
I had an unrelated question to the list here. There was a stipend for an assistant athletic director, and did I, did we do that in the fall too? Is that just like a seasonal thing? I didn't understand what that was.
The, the assistant athletic director is a, which is under review. Now, we're actually asking questions about that, that very thing. But if there is a, like a big game where the place will be packed and, you know, that there's an individual who actually goes to those various games to make sure they manage the game, to make sure there's not a problem, or if there's a challenge with one of the students from the visiting team, for example, they'll be there to try to, you know, address it. So it's a, it's a, because it's a person who actually goes to our games to make sure that things are running appropriately, particularly when there's a large crowd anticipated.
So that's, we're calling that an assistant athletic director, somebody going to?
That's what it has been called for a long time. And it is, it is, it is a position that is under review.
Okay.
And they're, they are offered seasonally, so fall, winter, and spring for the sports seasons.
And, and we did approve them, and we've approved them for years, and there's usually two or three individuals that are in that role sharing a stipend. One of them historically has been our former athletic director, who's obviously very familiar with what to do and not to do when it comes to the games. But it goes to the participation and the administration and having a, what's the word I'm looking for, the right figure to be there and present if there are events with students that transpire apparent needing to be removed from the field and other situations that could arise.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the three items under Human Resources? Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, HR motions are approved tonight.
Could I just take one moment to recognize Dr. Silmetto, who was just approved as our Director of Curriculum Instruction, like to congratulate her. She went through a rigorous process to be sitting here this evening, so thank you. I'm not sure if you had, if you would like to say something, you're more than welcome, but we congratulate you and look very much forward to your, your start date.
Thank you so much. It's a privilege, truly, to serve this community at a district level. I'm currently the skateboard and start coach. This is a phenomenal school district. I couldn't be happier or more proud to be stepping into this role. So just thank you so much.
Okay.
Welcome.
I don't know that we have any committee reports. Do you have anything on the intermediate unit, Emily, that you want to share?
The, our meeting was scheduled tonight to be the third Monday of the month, so actually the IU is meeting tonight. So I, I am here instead of at the IU meeting, so I do not have a report, so.
And I'll just speak to, we've covered most of the items from the facilities committee and our recent meetings, most of it being around the HVAC. But we will have, I believe at this next coming meeting, a review of the BRIC issue at the IS, and we'll be bringing that forward to the board. I'm hearing that there's some good news, and we're going to hopefully understand that it is very good news, but, you know, in terms of savings and the way in which we'll approach the remediation, but more to come and more details to be shared at the upcoming meeting on that.
And Michelle said it was my fault for not alerting Attorney Boyer, but we did have an executive session at our last facility committee meeting for the purposes of a legal matter, so we should add that as far as a public notice. And that was my fault for not passing that law.
Thank you for that. And we did talk about the stadium and the planning and so on at the last meeting also. So just, that's pretty much what's been taking place at facilities.
Okay. Mr. Maud, do you have anything to add regarding LCTI?
Yeah, LCTI, we also have a board meeting or a joint operating committee meeting tonight, so we're not able to be present to that. But there was an open house. It was very well attended. I was up there, a lot of activity, and I would recommend that anybody, whether them or their students are going to university or not, should check it out. It's a 450,000 square foot facility. It's a very big school with a lot to offer as well as programs for health sciences, animal sciences, pre-engineering, so some of those professional curriculum is there with job shadowing and internships and also college credit. So it's something that I would recommend that everybody check out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Treadwell and our township manager were going to join us tonight to address the board, so we have one person here. Welcome. Mr. Demick said you weren't here. Oh, excuses, excuses. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Yes, I was hiding in the back, and, and you guys are fast. Number 12 on the agenda, and it's 7:15. That's pretty good. I asked to speak to you tonight, and unfortunately, the Upper Salkin Township officials have their own meeting this evening. They were going to come afterwards, but maybe they're not done yet. I asked to speak to you tonight because I watched your last November 7th meeting on the, on YouTube or whatever it's broadcast on, and I heard some information and heard you ask some questions about Lower Salkin Township and the situation with the library, and I wanted to see if I could provide you with some more information, maybe answer some questions that you may have. It's a complicated situation. The Office of Commonwealth Libraries, which was mentioned earlier tonight, is a, is a state entity that operates under the Department of Education that if you've never bothered to look it up, you wouldn't know exists, and it's sometimes hard to understand what it is that they actually do. But part of the situation that Lower Salkin Township has found itself in is that we are looking for library services. And not to oversimplify it, but we understand that the Southern Lehigh Library has library services and that the Southern Lehigh Library is looking for funding and Lower Salkin Township has funding. So we are attempting to find a way to navigate through the morass of state library laws, regulations, Office of Commonwealth Libraries, Department of Education, to, to get to a conclusion that makes sense for everybody. I think everybody in this room would agree that library services are a good thing. I spent a lot of time in the library when I was a young kid. Library services should be available for everybody, but library services are also changing, and the internet has affected libraries just as, just as it has affected retail services, Blockbuster Video, and a bunch of other things that, that we could talk about. So what Lower Salkin Township is looking for, and the situation with the Heller Town Library is what it is. It's not going to change. I could spend a long time discussing how it got there, but I don't think you really care. It is what it is. And we are looking to the future, and we're looking to find a way to fund a library system, whether it's just the Southern Lehigh Public Library or a larger, larger library system, maybe including the Heller Town Area Library, that makes sense for everybody in the future. And part of the issue that brings this about is that this document right here is, is the list. It's a list that is published by the Department of Education, Office of Commonwealth Libraries, and the title of the list is municipalities not supporting public library service. I call this the no library for you list. This is Santa's Bad List. If you're a municipality and you don't support a public library, you go on this list. If you are on this list, your residents don't have a what's called, quote, home library. If you don't have a home library, you cannot go to any other library in the state of Pennsylvania under the Access PA program and participate in their services or borrow materials from their library. So the next question becomes, well, how do you stay off of the list? And the way you stay off of the list and then provide some library services for your residents is to support a public library. There is no definition in the regulations or the library laws about what support means. So it is in essence up to each individual library to determine what level of support they will request from any municipality in order to provide service to that municipality and in order to keep the municipality off of the list. That system does not seem to Lower Salkin Township to make a lot of sense. I think, I don't believe that we're alone in municipalities within this Commonwealth on that opinion. Lower Salkin Township, in fact, this year donated $50,000 to the Heller Town Area Library and donated $50,000 to the Southern Lehigh Public Library. Lower Salkin donated over $100,000 to public libraries, yet as of January 1st, Lower Salkin Township might be on this list of municipalities that do not support a library. One way to address that situation would be to change the entire system. The system probably should have some guidelines for municipalities that find themselves in this situation to require a certain level of funding, a certain percentage of their own budget, a certain percentage of the millage that they collect, something that would allow municipalities to have a concrete understanding of if you give X to public libraries, then your residents will get service. If you do not give X to public libraries, then your residents will not get service. And then municipalities could make that decision, informed decision, on their own. That is not the system that we have now. There are municipalities, I represent some of them, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania who donate less than $10,000 to their local library, yet all of their residents get service and they are not on the list. It seems that the system creates this ability for libraries to use, coercion is a strong term, but some type of pressure on a municipality who is looking for library services for its residents to fund it to a certain level. If not, no library services. The Philadelphia Public Library has a card system where any one of us could, can go on the internet, sign up for a Philadelphia Public Library card. You get a little card they send to you. It actually has your name on it. On the back of it, it has an Access PA sticker, which is the gold standard. However, if you take that card to a local library, the local library will tell you, you can download a book for your Kindle computer, whatever it is, device that you may use, or you can do online research, but you can't take out a hard copy with that book, in order, with that card. In order to take out a, a book, an actual book to read, you have to have a library card from that individual library. The individual library will give you a library card if you are not on the list. So it all goes back to the list. And we have tried and we have worked with the officials and administration in Upper Salkin Township to try and come up with a way to work within the system that exists since it's apparent that changing the system is probably going to take some time. So one of the things that we did when we found ourselves in this situation was to do a little bit of research, and there is a library system out in the Pittsburgh area. It's called the Northland Public Library. You can look them up, they're on the internet. It's a big library system. It serves, I think it's 80, 84,000 residents and five different municipalities. Those five municipalities came together and they actually formed an authority. They created a library authority, as you would a water and sewer authority, created an authority, and they have a formula. That formula takes into account population, usage, and your tax base, total amount of taxable property in the municipality, which is what your millage is then based on. What that system does is those five municipalities each have one person or something on a committee. The library comes to the committee and presents a budget to the committee. When the committee approves the library's budget, and sometimes they change it, take stuff out, add stuff in, when the committee approves the library's budget, that budget number, say it's $400,000, that budget number gets plugged into the formula. The formula then spits out what each municipality's financial obligation is. So it takes out of play the every-year procedure that we all go through where a library comes to a meeting and says, we would like X amount of funding, and the board then considers, okay, how much can we, how much do we have? How much can we afford? What's the usage? You know, all that stuff, which we all go through every year, is gone when you have this formula system. It's easy to understand, it's fair. All the municipalities have to agree to the formula upfront or else they don't sign on. So, and then you have an agreed-upon budget for a library to provide services to the 84,000 residents. You plug it in and everybody has a number. That's a system that those five municipalities came up with that provides, as I said earlier, services for 84,000 residents. Lower Salkin Township has approximately 11,000. Upper Salkin has about 17, it's 28. And Coopersburg and Lower Milford have somewhere around five to six to seven total. So we believe, and I think Upper Salkin agrees with us, that we could create a system for this geographical area, and by geographical area, I mean the area that's represented. And by geographical area, I mean the area that's represented by the Salkin Valley School District and the area that's represented by the Southern Lehigh School District, if you will, south of the city of Bethlehem, north of Bucks County, east of Allentown, west of the river, basically. I mean, that's the area that both school districts serve. Within those two school districts are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 municipalities. And we also understand, as we look to the future, that library services need to adapt to the needs of the people that use them. It's sometimes difficult to understand the information that comes from libraries in terms of how many people are using the library? Is it more internet? Is it more, we're checking out books? Is it more, we use the reading programs? You know, what is it that the people that live in our communities actually need and are looking for? And I know when I was in law school, a fairly long time ago, I was in the law library every day because you had to. I think we actually had an entire semester, it might even have been a year-long course on how to do research in the law library. But today, I hit a computer button, type in the name of the case, boom. Five seconds later, there it is. I don't have to go to the law library. It's more convenient. It's easier to read. It's easier to understand. I'm not saying that that's where all libraries are going, because we all, I think, believe and understand that we want people to still read books, and we want our kids to learn at libraries, and we want our kids to read books from libraries. But we have to adapt going forward, both in the area of how we fund them and also in the area of the services that they provide. So what we are asking for, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but we have this concept for creating a better system. We think it's good for municipalities. We think it's good for school districts. We think it's good for libraries themselves. And what we are asking for is for you to allow your administration to work with some people from Lower Salkin and Upper Salkin on this concept. And we are also asking that you support our request to the Southern Lehigh Library that we be allowed to get service from the Southern Lehigh Library in return for an agreed-upon amount of funding, which we believe is a significant number. So thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Did anybody from Upper Salkin?
I had a question. So you said in the beginning that you want to do what makes the most sense. And as an outsider watching this, what makes the most sense is for Lower Salkin Township to fund Lower Salkin Township's library, which is Heller Town, and that's the end of the story. Of course, I'm not privy to what happened there, because apparently it was explosive that this is what's going on now. But again, as an outsider looking in, it looks like Lower Salkin Township may be on that list because Lower Salkin Township isn't funding Lower Salkin Township's library, Heller Town. So I think that there needs to be, for me, I would like some sort of explanation as to why that's not happening.
Fair question. I think the simple answer is it's not Lower Salkin Township's library. It's Heller Town's library. And that has been made abundantly clear to Lower Salkin Township. When the issue began, probably, it was last year, probably around this time. It's probably been going on for a year. And there was a this could take some time, but there was an agreement that expired. A new agreement was presented. It was a tri-party agreement, Heller Town, the Heller Town Area Library, Lower Salkin. Two of the parties agreed to the terms of the new agreement, Heller Town and the Heller Town Area Library. Lower Salkin Township did not agree to the terms of the new agreement. Lower Salkin Township tabled the issue when it came in front of the Council of Lower Salkin Township. We then proceeded to have discussions with the library about how we could reach a mutual, how we could get to mutually agreeable terms for that agreement. Effective February 1st of last year, about a month into, well, less than a month, but the first meeting we had was in January sometime, January 19th rings a bell. January 19th, we had our first meeting to discuss, how can we resolve this issue? On February 1st, the Heller Town Area Library changed its bylaws and removed all Lower Salkin appointments from its board. So effective February 1st of 2022, Lower Salkin Township no longer had representation on the Heller Town Area Library Board. Now, keep in mind that over the past eight years, Lower Salkin Township has donated in excess of $930,000 to the Heller Town Area Library. And the response to some questions that Lower Salkin Township asked to the Heller Town Area Library was to remove Lower Salkin Township from, take away the board representation from Lower Salkin Township.
Can I ask a question?
Short, yeah.
Related to that?
Yeah, sure.
So you're not on the, I understand, I empathize with your position, but I also understand what Ms. Gangware's point is, and I agree with that. So my question for you is, so getting the timeline, obviously you can't get into further details. Do our Lower Salkin residents currently allowed to use the Heller Town Library? Are they allowed to check out materials since this all went down? They go in with their library card. Does it still work? Do they have access to services on grounds? Meaning, you know, for example, I'm sure, just like at the Southern Lehigh Library, right, there's, it's a meeting point for community members. There are organizations that meet there. There's planned activities for children and adults.
Yes. So currently, all of this year, 2022, Lower Salkin Township residents have Heller Town Area Library cards.
Okay.
What happens next is that in the spring of last year, the Heller Town Area Library wrote to the Office of Commonwealth Libraries and inquired how to remove Lower Salkin from its service area.
Okay.
The Office of Commonwealth Libraries said, "We're not quite sure." But you can't do it, basically, until the beginning of 2023.
And that's what you're waiting on, some resolution?
Well, there has now been a request, request number one, from the library to Heller Town Library to OCL, OCL, was to remove, to allow them to remove Lower Salkin from their service area prior to the expiration of 10 years. There's a 10-year period in the regulations. The Office of Commonwealth Libraries said yes. We, Lower Salkin Township, sent a letter to Office of Commonwealth Libraries saying, "We didn't even know you were considering this. You didn't ask us. You didn't ask us for our participation. You didn't allow us to state our position." The Heller Town Area Library then sent us notification that effective January, effective December 31st, 2022, they intend to not provide services to Lower Salkin Township. So it is highly possible that on January 1st, which is probably a weekend because our meetings probably, so January 3rd is probably the first business day of next year, that Lower Salkin Township residents will not have library services. But today, they do.
I have another question about that. I know in Lower Salkin Township, a very large portion of it, the mailing address is Bethlehem. And the Bethlehem Area Public Library is more than well-equipped to take on an excess number of patrons, whereas the Southern Lehigh Public Library is not. Is there a reason why that Lower Salkin didn't go to Bethlehem instead of to Southern Lehigh?
The when this situation became public very rapidly at the beginning of this year, the Bethlehem Area Library employees, I don't think it was a library board policy, but Bethlehem Area Library employees started telling Lower Salkin Township residents who do use the Bethlehem Library that they would no longer be able to use the Bethlehem Area Library unless Lower Salkin Township agreed to pay the Heller Town Area Library $107,000, $168.68, $68.04, or whatever the number was. So the Bethlehem Area Library and the Heller Town Area Library appear to be on the same page when it comes to Lower Salkin Township. A little bit more history, Lower Salkin Township, eight years ago, was part of the Bethlehem Area Library service area and left the Bethlehem Area Library service area because every year the Bethlehem Area Library kept increasing the amount that it requested from Lower Salkin Township. And Lower Salkin Township said, "Okay, back then, wait a minute. Timeout. We have another library over here, which is the Heller Town Area Library, which we know some of our people use as well. And we don't want to go through every year with this demand that is a unilateral demand that we don't have anything to say about." So again, and you have probably heard or read in the newspaper that there's this fear that Lower Salkin Township is jumping around and library shopping and doing things like that. It's not what Lower Salkin Township is interested in. We're interested in a long-term solution to what is a somewhat complicated problem.
So I mean, I appreciate, without getting in the middle of, I mean, I can empathize with the position of township residents, but I think one issue or concern I have is related to what Ms. Gangware was saying, and that, you know, I think the library that we, you know, Southern Lehigh Public Library clearly has, the resources are not, you know, we're not equipped to take on that many more residents. It would appear, based on their presentation, I'm getting the look, I know from you, but if, you know, have you had those discussions, you know, with a third part, with the Upper Salkin Township, because you mentioned you've been meeting with them? Because I think, well, I think the idea that you mentioned in sharing a cost based on, you know, usage and millage, I think that makes sense in the end, to some degree, regardless of which townships or municipalities are involved. But has that come up with respect to how much more it would take and how much more space it would take to house an increase in residents? Because, you know, current services that are provided, I mean, beyond books, tend to have wait lists, even with Southern Lehigh residents. So I think that acknowledgement of that, those resources, you know, being somewhat limited, because it's, right now, it's the only space that we have for community members, right? We don't have a YMCA, which is coming, but, you know, that's the space where people gather, beyond just the books and checking out books. And of course, we would need more copies of books. And I know kids utilize the library, for example, for required reading sometimes during the summer, you know, and that's important for families who can't afford to purchase.
They also said that they would have to put on an addition and higher a number of
Right, so that's what I'm getting at, too, because there was, there is a perception with respect to a large increase in cost, despite a nominal increase in residents. I understand the numbers that you mentioned.
I have a question. Where are you with in the process of trying to create this authority that it seems to be a better practice in terms of organization, number one? And how does one go about doing that? And is the Office of Commonwealth Libraries aware that you're looking to do that? And would they be, or are they supportive?
I'm sorry, before you answer that, could you maybe finish your, what you were saying to Mrs. Serene?
Oh, I'm sorry if I interrupted.
No, no, that's okay. Any question, I'll take them all. So yes, the question on the size of, the physical size of the Southern Lehigh Public Library, the amount of people that use the Southern Lehigh Public Library, completely understood, there is Lower Salkin Township in no way would want to insert itself into a library system that creates less service for the existing people. No, makes no sense. Nor would we want to insert ourselves into a library system where it costs then the existing funding partners, the school district and the three municipalities, more money. We get that. We will pay for what we need to do to make sure that it works. That's a given. I mean, otherwise, you wouldn't even talk to me, right? I mean, nobody would. "Well, if you come over here, it's going to cost us more money." "Yeah, okay, see ya. Goodbye." So no, we have talked about that with Upper Salkin Township. We understand that. We also understand that a lot of what the services that libraries provide are reading programs where children attend on a Sunday morning or Saturday morning or whenever it's set up, and that there are people in libraries that are great at teaching these programs and providing these services, but that there are sometimes too many kids who want to participate. So we get that. Maybe there's not enough space in that library. I think I've been in the Southern Lehigh Library once. I don't remember the square footage, but it was pretty big. And I think there's room in there to provide those types of services and other classes. If not, Lower Salkin Township also happens to own a bunch of buildings, and we have space in those buildings where we could have a reading program with maybe another employee or part-time employee hired by the Southern Lehigh Public Library, funded by Lower Salkin Township, where those programs could take place so that it didn't create overcrowding in the Southern Lehigh Public Library or any other library that was part of the system. And as to the authority question, the Pittsburgh Area, Northland Area Library is an authority. I use that as an example. I do not think that creating an authority for 35,000 residents, I mean, they did it that way because of the numbers that they had, I think. I think it's way easier to sign a simple little partnership-type agreement with the people that are involved here without going through necessarily the legality and the expense of creating an authority. And yes, we had a Zoom call, one Zoom call, back in the spring, I think, with four or five people from the Office of Commonwealth Libraries, and we explained this to them, and the Office of Commonwealth Libraries said, "We only act on things that come across our desk." So if it came across their desk, then maybe they would approve or disapprove, but I'm not even sure they have that authority because the last letter that we got from the Office of Commonwealth, well, actually, it was an attorney from the Governor's Counsel's Office who was representing the Office of Commonwealth Libraries. And that letter stated that the Office of Commonwealth Libraries does not have, I'm paraphrasing, the ability to require a library to provide service or the ability to tell a library not to provide service. That is up to the local library itself.
I have one more question. If Lower Salkin Township has all this money to donate and use to local libraries and all of these buildings and spaces, why doesn't Lower Salkin Township create its own Lower Salkin Township library?
We have considered that option. I don't think it's cost-effective, especially if there are two local libraries that exist that if we could somehow persuade them to cooperate, would provide services for all the people in the communities of the Salkin Valley School District and the Southern Lehigh School District. Building a new library at a cost of however many millions of dollars, sure, we could, but as we look to the future, I don't really think it makes a lot of sense because I don't think the brick and mortar, or maybe book and mortar libraries are in that size are the wave of the future, especially if most people or a lot of people are reading books on their Kindle and doing research.
Hi, Emily here. Maybe I didn't understand you then before, because earlier you said if you had a Philadelphia library card, you could check out electronic resources, but you couldn't check out a physical book, and that your argument seemed to be that it would be a disservice to the community to not be able to check out a physical book. But now you're saying that electronic books are the wave of the future? Perhaps I misunderstood what you were saying there.
Okay. First of all, I wasn't making an argument. I'm just trying to provide information. But what I was saying was, you can get a Philadelphia library card that allows you online research, but that's not enough for all the members of the community.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, the members of the community want to check out books.
Okay. I was just confused then because you were saying you're not sure of brick and mortar, but
No, I'm saying building a $5 million new library right down the street from two existing libraries doesn't seem to make practical sense.
Thanks, thanks. I just thought for a second I misunderstood you. Thanks.
During Dreadwell, I might have misunderstood the presentation and also, I think, missed part of it anyway. I think I walked in late to it. So I'm talking the library presentation that was nice enough for Upper Salkin to do for us, or excuse me, Southern Lehigh Library. I thought they indicated at one point that I thought they indicated at one point that they would re, their understanding is that they would have to hire staff, and I might be wrong. I thought they said something along the lines of either they had to hire staff and possibly expand footage based on some dictate from this overlord of libraries, the OCL. And since you appear to be somewhat of a, it sounds like it's part of your job, you've now become an expert in the OCL. Can you tell me from your understanding whether the OCL can some, whether that's accurate or not? And I'm not saying Southernly High, it sounds like, it would be understandable if Southernly High misunderstood that. Because I think, but what's your understanding of what the OCL can tell local libraries?
It's extremely confusing. And the OCL website even says it's extremely confusing. Couple of years ago, the legislature changed the law and they changed the way the law is numbered. But nobody ever changed the regulations to coincide with the new way that the law is numbered. So even when you read the regulations now and it sends you to a section of the law, it's not the section of the law. You have to go find it. It's, it's really, really confusing. And I completely understand why anybody reading it who doesn't spend a lot of time reading the statute or a regulation would have a problem figuring out what it means. I'm not even sure I know what it means. It's hard to figure out. But what it looks like is there are different levels of state aid that, that libraries receive from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So level one is, I think it's called qualities library aid. So if you meet XYZ requirements, you get level one aid. If you meet ABC requirements, you get excellence in libraries aid, which is another level of funding. So I think I heard a Southernly High representative from the last meeting say maybe $58,000 comes from the state of Pennsylvania for aid. That's in different pieces. It's not just here's $58,000. It's if you meet this, you get this. If you meet this, you get this. So embedded in there is the concept that libraries are required to spend $5 per person in their service area to qualify for state aid to begin with. Then there are, I think, to get qualities library aid, and I'm going from memory, is you have to be open at least 26 hours a week. To get excellence in library aid, you have to be open 45 hours a week. So then that's in the law. Then you go to the regulations and the regulations seem to interpret that 45 hours per week as telling you how many employees you need. So, I'm sorry. So one of the sections in the regulations states one full-time equivalent per 3,500 people in the service area. But then the next sentence says, however, you can meet this requirement by providing one full-time employee. Not really clear whether you need one per 3,500. I don't know how many they have now. I don't know how many any library has now, honestly. But it would seem to me that three additional full-time employees for, or maybe four, to cover Lower Salkin Township, that you don't need four people to be open 45, 46 hours a week, 45 hours a week. So I can't, we can't figure out, and I'm sure the library people are just as confused as we are about what those regulations mean. But yes, there is something in there that says that. Keep in mind as well how long ago those regulations and laws were written. Because a long time ago, people spent, more people spent more time in libraries than they happen to do today. Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, it's a fact.
Do you mind, I just had a quick clarification on the numbers that initially you were saying. So how many, according to you, the numbers that our current library serves?
Oh, I have no idea.
The population that we currently serve, can you please clarify that, Lynette? Population, yeah, you'd give them population numbers.
Seventeen thousand in, yeah.
Currently.
Seventeen thousand Upper Salkin, six with Coopersburg and Lower Milford combined. And Lower Salkin is 11.
Could someone just go over those numbers?
About 23,500, I think, for, right now, for us, for the municipalities, not Lower Salkin.
Could somebody just say those? I appreciate that recap, Stephen. Could somebody just say those numbers for me again? Just, some of them were mic'd in the back, some of them weren't. Just the rundown where those population numbers were.
Seventeen thousand Upper Salkin.
Thank you. Yeah.
Six thousand about combined, Coopersburg and Lower Milford. And Lower Salkin Township is 11.
Attorney Treadwell, does Salkin Valley School District provide, are they considered like?
It does not now.
Okay. So that's a little different than our funding over here.
True.
And is it your, and I don't mean for you to speak for Upper Salkin, I wish they, obviously, they can't make, I know they have another meeting tonight. I guess, could you let me know the end game that you're understanding and you're talking with Upper Salkin, obviously?
Correct.
I guess the ultimate thought would be that, I understand you don't want to call it an authority, but this sort of combined library.
It's a partnership.
A partner, yeah. Okay. No, that's good. Partnership would then provide a more definitive fund, budget that, that all the various municipalities, if the school districts remained in that, I guess we would assume that Salkin Valley would come in, or maybe this school district would leave and Upper Salkin and Lower Salkin would pick up more. I don't know. But the idea would be economies of scale and accurate budget forecasting that would allow greater taxpayer, you know, efficiencies while having either the same or perhaps increased library services. Is that the overall idea of what it's being trying to achieve?
That is the concept of the partnership. And quite frankly, we, in looking at this, we assumed that at some point in the next 10 years, obtaining funding for a library from municipalities will be harder and harder to do. So we looked at the surrounding area and we looked at the two municipalities that can most afford to support a library. And those two municipalities are Upper Salkin Township and Lower Salkin Township. And at some point, we would, I'm sorry, but at some point, I would guess that, you know, as is the case for a lot of the people on these lists, some municipalities just can't afford it.
So is that going to happen by the end of the year? Sorry. I mean, how are we going to do that by the end of the, right? You're going to lose coverage?
We're not going to do it.
Right. I'm sorry. I just wanted to put the timeline back. Sorry, Jeff.
We're not going to have the partnership and the funding formula and everything done.
Right. So what's the backup plan?
By the end of the year. Well, what we would ask is that, what we have asked the Southernly High Library, and I think what Upper Salkin has asked the Southernly High Library, is to allow, provide services to Lower Salkin Township residents starting January 1st. We will write another check to the Southernly High Library as we continue down this line. There's an option B for Lower Salkin Township. And option B is we're going to have to litigate it. We don't want to do that, but it's, it doesn't.
Litigate with who? With Hellertown or Southernly High?
No, the Office of Commonwealth Libraries. We'll file a declaratory judgment action in Commonwealth Court with the, with an injunction against the Office of Commonwealth Libraries for approving Hellertown removing us from their service area prior to the 10-year term without allowing Lower Salkin Township to participate.
Yeah, due process. The, the other issue is, I guess, at the moment, do we know, Southernly High certainly, I suspect, since it's right on the border, is probably servicing Lower Salkin residents right now through access PA cards, even if it doesn't result in a hard book. Is that, is that your understanding?
That's correct. And Lower Salkin Township is unique in its geography and in its border. We have residents in Lower Salkin Township who live closest to the Southernly High Library. We have residents in Lower Salkin Township who are closest to the Hellertown Library. We have residents in Lower Salkin Township who might be closest to the Regalsville Library if you're on the far east end of the township. And we have residents in Lower Salkin Township who might be closest to the Bethlehem area library. So when Lower Salkin Township looks at it, it's like, okay, why isn't there a system in place that allows our people to use whichever library is most convenient? Because that's what people want, convenience. But, and at the same time allows us to fund all four libraries in some measure based on the number of people that use it. It makes sense.
Kind of sounds like you're at, sorry, Emily here again. It kind of sounds like you're at the mercy of this higher OCL library authority for putting Lower Salkin on what you called the good list, the municipalities that support libraries. But, oh, sorry, the bad, the bad list, I reversed it. So it's a bad list. It's a list of municipalities that don't support libraries. So it sounds like you're at the mercy of this OCL higher library authority to not put you on that list. But by the same turn, it also sounds like the Southernly High Public Library, as they explained, is also at the mercy of OCL, that higher authority. Because if it accepts Lower Salkin as a service area, that increases the required number of, you know, the full-time employees, whatever they are, and the circulation and, and the programming at a cost. And here's the crux of the matter, at a cost which far exceeds the amount it sounds like Lower Salkin has or can financially provide. Because I believe you said the reason, maybe not the reason, but I believe you said that the Hellertown Library would no longer be servicing Lower Salkin if it didn't write a check for $107,000. But that amount of money, even if you cut that, which you didn't want to cut that check to the Hellertown Library, but even if you decided to cut that check, and not you, obviously, Lower Salkin. But even if that check was written to Southernly High Public Library, that wouldn't cover the increased cost of the increased service area. So it just doesn't, I mean, obviously, you're both at the, at the mercy of this higher authority. But even if that $107,000 was written to Southernly High, it's not going to cover the increased expenses of an additional, basically doubling our current population. And you offer wonderful solutions about alternate locations, but that doesn't speak to me to efficiency. And it seems like I just, I guess I can't understand why you want to write $107,000, more than $107,000 check to Southernly High Public Library when you don't want to write it to Hellertown Library. And the only other thing, oh, the chance I can, I just, the only thing I want to say to give you a full breadth of what I'm thinking is, it sounds like the solution here that you're offering is to create an authority outside of OCL.
Which, no, Emily, I had.
Okay. Well, you're saying no. But you want to create this authority that operates.
I think.
Yeah, yeah. But, but my point, my point here is, to what end is it to, because the measures of OCL can't be met? Is this generally going to decrease? Like, those are my concerns.
Maybe, maybe it's easier if you look at it this way. I don't want to create an authority. There's an authority that exists. It's a shining example of how to work together. Want to create a partnership that looks like an authority.
Okay, a partnership, but it would still fall under OCL?
And a part, no, OCL's still involved. They do what they do.
Right.
Whatever that may be. But they still do what they do. We have a partnership and the biggest, I think the biggest thing that brought Lower Salkin Township and Upper Salkin Township together on this issue is a partnership with equal partners. Upper Salkin Township does not have a partnership with equal partners now when it comes to funding a library. They pay a lot of money to the library. They have three other partners, one of them being this board, that contributes smaller amounts. Lower Salkin Township is the 65% funding partner, has been of the Hellertown area library. Yet it is still the Hellertown area library. And we are subject to the whims of Hellertown Borough. So what we are looking for and what Upper Salkin, I think, is looking for is a partnership of equal partners that we can share together in our funding and in providing services to the residents that we both serve.
Okay, Mr., we need to hear some, well, Robert's rules here. Okay. I need to hear some, some other folks who haven't spoken yet. So.
Real quick, Upper Salkin just walked in.
Yes, I know that. Okay. So.
So I just wanted to clarify, I kind of wish Jeff was here because we talked about efficiencies. And I think, Emily, you made a good point about efficiencies. So you had, you had mentioned Northland Public Library Authority as a shining example.
Correct.
Right. So I'm looking at their operating budget, $3.2 million operating budget for 84,000 residents. So our Southernly High Public Library, for 24,000, 23,500 residents, operates almost twice as efficient as that Northland Public Library. So with, with an operating budget of about 500,000, I'm, I know I'm estimating, but about 500,000, we're $21 per, per person. And Northland is operating at $38 per person. So, you know, speaking of efficiency, I mean, if we have a, if Southernly High Public Library has a library that we're happy with, why would we accept?
Well, there's a.
Another entity? And how does the school district, how does this benefit the school district? Because right now, we're at a school board meeting.
Correct.
And I think, and I've said this before, but I, you know, I think our, our primary goal is, you know, K through 12 education. I appreciate the pre-K education and the opportunities that the library provides. I appreciate Lynette giving, sending us numbers that I had asked for with over 700 K through 12 students, you know, utilizing the library, 5,000, you know, items being checked out. I mean, that's wonderful. That's a shining example of our library that works. Why would we decrease our efficiency? And if our, if our constituents, if, if our residents are happy with the library services that, that we provide, I guess I'm just, you know, not to be quite frank, like, why is Lower Salkin our problem?
We're not.
Okay.
Quite honestly, we're not. But we're not looking to decrease your efficiencies. There, there are levels of efficiencies, right? This Southernly High Library is operating at a good level of efficiency. The Northland Public Library may be too big, right? You add Lower Salkin in, you're somewhere in the middle. You don't have to decrease your efficiency by adding Lower Salkin Township. And what's the benefit to the school district? Let's say in the next 10 years, that one of the other municipalities comes to the Southernly High Library and says, we are no longer able to provide funding to the Southernly High Library. So our $20,000 donation to the Southernly High Library, or our $25,000 donation to the Southernly High Library, is not going to exist next year. The Southernly High Library needs to make up that funding. At that point, there are only two places to make it up. The Southernly High School District or Upper Salkin Township. Upper Salkin Township already gives $203,000 a year to the Southernly High Library. Plus they pay the mortgage or the bill for the building that was, that was built. So I don't think any more money is going to come from Upper Salkin Township. That leaves, without Lower Salkin Township, potentially the school district being asked to make up the difference.
Thank you. So in this partner. Ms. Gaiman, let me allow other people who have not asked questions or spoke, spoken first. Okay, Mr. Maud and Mr. Lisette.
Thank you. Thanks for visiting tonight. It's been quite ambiguous, all the different facts in this. So I appreciate hearing some other facets of this. I would just say first that it's kind of interesting that the school district has become the broker for having a community interaction on this subject. It seems to me that that's been difficult. So I'm glad that we're having some of this here tonight to shed light on it. I guess just the one general statement I want to make, and I'm going to leave it at that, is there are a lot of numbers being floated around. There have been a lot of things that have been said about whether there is or isn't capacity, whether there is or is not budget capability. And I think, quite frankly, there is not enough in the numbers to be able to justify one way or the other at this point. That's just my opinion. But I think when you look at the metrics at the library and the utilization thereof, coupled with the utilization potential with Lower Salkin, coupled with the entire budget requirements, there needs to be a lot of homework done to properly understand what happens maybe in the immediate future, and then what happens in a five-year plan. Now, I know that Southernly High Public Library is in the process of putting together a, a five-year plan. Hopefully, there are some numbers in there to estimate or some other metrics to help evaluate the need or the, the ability for the, for the public library to take on additional membership. And then also do some contingency planning for budgeting and what a recommended budgeting plan would be for all of the entities, either with or without Lower Salkin Township. I think if we get all of those facts together as a community. I think if we get all of those facts together as a community, we can better understand where we head because numbers should not lie. So if we get more numbers and put them out there and really do some practical projections, we could better understand it. And that's all I have to say about it, but thanks. I appreciate everybody being here so that we can, you know, talk about it.
Has anybody who hasn't spoken want to speak?
Very simply, if I'm hearing and I'm thinking correctly, I'd very much like to hear from Upper Salkin. Because what I'm hearing very clearly is that a potential donation and partner is interested in services. An existing partner is perhaps evaluating services and also happens to hold the building that the library currently sits in. And that five years from now, things could be drastically different than what they are today if the township that we're sitting in right now, Upper Salkin, decides not to fund at the current level. So I'd like to hear from this other major partner what they're considering. For the future, I'd also like to understand more of why Salkin School District does not fund the library in any way, shape, or form, and it's all funded either by Heller Town or formerly by Lower Salkin and so on. So I, I think those are some questions I'd love to hear more information and more detail about.
I believe the representatives from Upper Salkin have arrived.
Thank you. I'm sorry for taking up so much.
No, we, we're grateful you're here. Thank you for all of the, the information.
Good evening. My name's Tom Byle. I'm the manager for Upper Salkin Township. I'm here with two of my board members, Brian Farrell, he's the chairman of the board, and John Ingles is also one of the supervisors on the board. And the, the township's position is that we support adding Lower Salkin Township to the Southern Lee High Service Area. So the board has taken a position. I do have a, a letter in support that we wrote to the library board. Be happy to share that letter with you tonight. But I, I think there's some numbers that you should be aware of, and I think it puts all of this in a better perspective. In 2003, Upper Salkin contributed $73,000 to the library. In 2013, Upper Salkin contributed $240,000 to the library. And the breakdown on 2013 is $151,000 for operating expenses, $89,000 for debt service on the building. And then for 2022, the township is going to contribute $326,000, almost $327,000. And the breakdown there is $203 for operating, $89 to for debt, and $34 to for capital. We set up a special capital fund for the library. And I, I think everyone agrees, the one thing maybe everyone agrees on is the library is a fantastic community asset. We have a wonderful library, and we want to continue to have a wonderful library. The question is, how do we get there? And I don't know that Upper Salkin can continue to fund the library at the level we have in the past. So we need help. So I think that's our position. Who is going to step up and help us? Is it the school board? Is it Coopersburg? Is it Lower Milford? I don't know, but we need help in funding, adequately funding, and making sure we have a fantastic library well into the future. Now, we have a funding partner in Lower Salkin, but for some reason, we don't want to accept that funding partner. So I think that's the frustration that the township board of super supervisors have at this point, is that there's clearly a funding partner, there's a path forward to help with the funding for the Southern Lee High Library, but for some reason, we can't seem to move the ball forward on this issue. So that, that's kind of my perspective on it and the township's perspective on it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yeah.
So then what's the obstacle in your position?
I, I don't know what the obstacle is. You know, I, I guess some of it could be, you know, what's going to happen to Heller Town? And that's a legitimate concern. Because if you take Heller Town's funding away, what happens to that library? It's a tough question. But even that obstacle probably could be dealt with by maybe some of the funding that Lower Salkin provides maybe should go back to Heller Town. Maybe that's the way to deal with that issue.
Right, so has there been any discussion along those lines to form, kind of like repair, whatever bonds have been broken here with, so that you have two options for Lower Salkin Township? Because I think the concern is, you know, the bump in those served, how much of that gap would be made up by an increase in donations from Lower Salkin, right? Like, so I think, you know, has there been discussion, just kind of taking away from whatever the, the, I'm not going to get, I don't need to know what the drama was that unfolded. But, you know, because there is still a library, and you don't want that one to fold either because there will be residents that are impacted. So has there been, you know, has Upper Salkin, for example, tried to bridge that relationship gap that has clearly formed? And having services provided by both, like, could it be shared so that it's not, it doesn't have such a large impact on the Southern Lee High one short-term, given it would take time to build up staffing and build up spacing as discussed previously?
I think those are all wonderful ideas, and we hope that you join the discussion. And I, I hope we can, maybe the school board can do a better job than we did of bringing the parties together and trying to find some middle ground. To date, we've tried, and we can't seem to get, seem to get there. So I, I think those are wonderful ideas. I hope the school district plays a part in bringing the parties together and trying to find a compromise.
It seems that the bulk of your reasoning for wanting this merger is financial, even though there are a ton of other aspects. But if Lower Salkin would start contributing and we would take them on, then the operating expenses, the possible addition that would have to be created, and all of those costs are going to go up too. So the donations from Lower Salkin might, if we're lucky, cover the added expense of taking on Lower Salkin, but the other expenses are still going to be there. So how does it lighten our load, your load, Coopersburg load to take on Lower Salkin? Because all of the expenses that are there today are going to be there tomorrow with the added expense from Lower Salkin, which hopefully they'll cover. But are they going to cover in excess? Because if they'll cover the addition of Lower Salkin and then some, I could see it helping us. But if they're not going to cover that, it's, what is, why, it's not lightening our load.
And I think we need some guarantees from Lower Salkin that they're going to cover the expenses. So, you know, we all don't have to, we, we shouldn't wind up with a situation where we add Lower Salkin and we all wind up paying more. That, that's a ridiculous situation. So we need to make sure that Lower Salkin pays their fair share, and we don't have, you know, this result where all paying more.
But how does your bill go down? Because it sounds like your, your point was that you guys paid three, are going to pay 300,000. You can't continue to do that, which is why you think we should take on Lower Salkin. So how does your bill decrease by taking on Lower Salkin?
Because I think Lower Salkin is coming to the table with $100,000 that they're willing to contribute each year for library services. So that's either going to allow us to keep our contribution steady, which I think is going to be a stretch, but not out of the question. But at least we don't have these huge increases like we've seen in the past.
But what about the addition, like, you, you'll probably have to put an addition on the library to service these people. That's going to cost millions of dollars. You're going to have to hire additional staff, get more books, blah, 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 blah. All the extra things that go with that, you still have to pay for all of that.
I, I think that's, I, I, I don't know that that's a certainty. You know, now you're getting into my personal opinion of libraries rather than the board's official position. The board's official position that they see it as a benefit for the library to add Lower Salkin. My position is that adding staff and adding to the building really doesn't make sense. You know, we don't want a blockbuster video model for the library. You know, the future is not blockbuster video. The future is Apple TV, or it's Disney Plus.
Wait, then are you recommending that the library stay exactly as it is and take on 11,000 more people?
I think I'm recommending that, yes. Because I think more people are going to use digital services. I don't think your students are going to come to the library in 15 or 20 years. How many people are going to be coming to the library? They're going to want digital services. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that we invest more in digital services because that's where the future is.
I haven't said much here, but I would agree with you. When I visited the library, the parking lot was full of folks using the rail trail. The library was fairly empty, so were the offices. So I would agree, there's been a shift in how bricks and mortar are used by people to access information and resources.
Look at the promenade shelves. It looks very different today.
And I, I think Lower Salkin made a very good point with regard to other physical facilities that the townships own that could be utilized for gatherings for community folks. So I would agree with you on a personal level.
Mr. Demme.
And my understanding, I guess then, if I, if I even try and read between the lines, is that it seemed to me that the libraries currently can somewhat go to you with whatever the request is annually. And to your point, evidently, that request has been, has had substantial growth annually, given the numbers you started with from 2070. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty good clip. And it sounded, you seem to be echoing what Lower Salkin was telling us was sort of happening over there. And then it seems like the, the power that the libraries have over their municipalities, because obviously, they don't, they're not, they're not taxing authorities, so they're dependent upon how their donations are, is though to possibly get people on the, the list of people that maybe can't have municipality, library services, which of course would be angering to a lot of, to a lot of the population that's involved there. So my understanding from what Lower Salkin was saying is that you could draft an agreement that we haven't necessarily seen, you know, a whole lot of, but evidently, there's an example of in the western part of the state whereby, you know, an agreement that sort of sets some of the funding, who funds it, how it's funded, and, and gives you some certainty in the funding going forward, which, you know, any, we're, we're similar to you, we're taxing authority, and we got to pay our bills, and we want to know what those bills are going to be in two, three, four, or five years out with certainty, or as best certainty as we can. Is it your understanding that, that that is what, hopefully, in the, in the future, if this were to be a partnership that was realized, that there would be a different actual structure, some kind of legal structure that, that the library, the municipalities would join in that, and might, may include this school board and possibly maybe Salkin Valley School Board? Or maybe we would enter, exit out, and I'm not sure how that would work. But is it your understanding that that would also be pursued? That there'd be some kind of legal agreement that would allow, set up sort of a legal structure for funding the Southern Lee High Library through Lower Salkin, Lower Milford, Coopersburg, Upper Salkin, and possibly us?
I think that's a, a good idea. You have other players that are not here tonight, like Coopersburg and, and Lower Milford. They may not have the resources of a Lower Salkin or an Upper Salkin Township or even a school board. So we need to be sensitive to those two other funding partners. But I think coming up with a formula that we can all agree on is a good idea. It adds some, some, you know, some certainty to the way the budgets are going to work moving forward, and it adds an element of fairness, which I think the current funding structure lacks. You know, where, where one entity is funding at a much higher level, any way you slice it, we're, we're funding at a higher level, whether it's per person, or total, or tax revenue, any way you look at it. I think coming up with a better funding formula is something that we need to look at. But yeah, I think we would be in agreement, let's all get together, let's come up with a funding formula, and let's come up with a structure that works.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, I, I would agree as, as a member of a funding, one of the funding organizations that you guys have been carrying the water over the last decade.
And we're happy to do that. I'm not complaining.
And it's benefited the, yeah, obviously, it's benefited, yeah, sure.
You know, I think a strong library is something that every community needs.
Yep.
It's not a question of, do you like the library? And I think everybody says the library is a wonderful community treasure. It's how do you adequately fund the library? That's the issue.
With predictability and sustainable, sustainable budgeting, right?
Yes.
Right, because eventually, you guys are going to hit a breaking point too, which is bad for everybody, since you're the guys carrying the water.
Just this year alone, fire trucks are over $1 million. I, I know you guys deal with the same things, fire trucks over $1 million, and plow trucks are now over $250,000. So when you're forced to decide some of these tough issues, and I'm sure this board is also forced to decide tough issues, you know, do you buy a fire truck, or do you, do you fund the library? I, I think at some point, we're going to be forced to deal with some of those very, very difficult issues. Or do you raise taxes?
Or do you find economies of scale possibly by pulling more?
Partners, adding the number of partners that are contributing to the library, yes.
In reference to, Mr. Wayack said earlier that, again, this is a school board, and we are taxed with our students. And to assume that we aren't going to make any changes to the library and still offer all of the pre-K and K to 12 programs and all of the time in the summer and on holidays that our library is servicing our kids, especially some of the at-risk kids or kids with needs, to say that we are going to take on an entire other municipality and not make any changes to our library, I think is unreasonable.
Well, I think it depends on what you define as changes. I think building in addition to the building, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that would be a waste of money because the world is going digital. I think that's.
Well, we were under the impression that, that that was a state thing, that if you have so many, if you, the number of people that you serve, you have to have so much square footage per, I don't remember what it was. But we were under the impression that that was a state thing, that you needed to expand to cover how many people.
Staffing is, is the, is the funding.
I think that square footage was a part of it too. From, from the report that we got before, the square footage was a part of it too.
There's a recommendation to add the square footage because they think there's a need for more, more office space.
That, that wasn't the impression that I got from the report that we got last time.
I guess the only other question that came up as a result of this new information about adding a community with the intent being to service it digitally is the other thing we as a school, a school board have discussed, with reference to kids and those important programs which are now waitlisted, is that I, like, whatever happened to schools, kids being in schools and interacting in community settings and getting them off of screens? And I think while that might service a certain portion of the population, the adult portion of the population, when we're talking about kids and programs, what, I, I don't see increasing digital as serving that K through 12 population as much as increasing those interactions in community settings and providing a place in our community for kids to learn and work and be tutored and come together. That, so if you're looking at it strictly from a lens of a school board, while I agree with your economies of scale about a digital increase serving the library population at large, I think my concern going forward as a school board partner in this is thinking about the K through, well, the pre-K, the birth through, you know, college age, birth through 12 population, and how those services impact.
Do we have any new comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that none of these decisions can be made until more information is available. And unfortunately, we have many different entities here, but there's an analysis, a budget and economic analysis on the part of the library that has to happen in order to understand capacity and where they are today, also including estimates from Lower Salkin Township's population that utilizes the library so we can understand that capacity, and then start thinking about how we can move forward. But it's not going to happen right away. So why not start thinking about an interim plan where Lower Salkin could potentially temporarily be included if they are no longer able to be a member of the Heller Town Library so that they have a landing spot as some of these other activities that are sorely needed from a strategic planning standpoint are done? So that the library can do their work? And so I, I don't know if there's an answer there, but I think we need a short-term and then the intermediate plan.
Well, maybe, I, I think I heard a lot of very positive things that you want to facilitate discussions among all the different entities. Perhaps there could be a committee, or maybe there already is a committee that the school board has that could lead that. I think this, I hate to say it wastes a lot of your time, but in many ways, it wastes a lot of your time. And maybe there's a better way through a committee system and meeting with Upper Salkin. and meeting with Upper Salkin, meeting with the other funding partners, being with the library, where your committee could help in terms of bringing everyone together and continuing the discussion.
So you were proposing a committee with representatives of Lower Salkin, Upper Salkin, both libraries?
Coopersburg.
Lower Milford too, yeah.
And the school board.
What about Heller Town?
Does it sound like they're an interested party to potentially participate from what I mean? Well, just going on what I've heard here.
We can invite them all. Let's bring everyone to the table.
Silos here that need to combine and at least get a resolution to it.
During the lower Salkin portion of the different libraries that they utilize, we of course only have one library that is in close proximity. But the concept of a partnership with Heller Town, I think it was Regalsville, and Upper Salkin is kind of intriguing. The other thing that I heard very clearly is there's some open buildings that could, in terms of programming, be utilized and would alleviate some of the strain on the current space at the Upper Salkin Library that more programming where people are waitlisted could be offered by looking at different locations within relatively close proximity. So I think there's a lot of opportunity that could be explored if the right people can get around the table, put their differences aside, and just talk about what's best for the communities, much like what I imagine the Y is doing, because it's not just going to be an Upper Salkin Y. It's going to be a community's Y that's going to draw in from all around the area. I think the library should follow a similar model.
I think ambulance corps, fire departments, the future is consolidation and regionalization. And I think it's the same way with libraries. Maybe people don't want to accept that fact, but some of these funding numbers that I mentioned tonight will force that on us. There has to be consolidation and more economy of scale.
If a committee is formed, I volunteer just saying.
Mary Joy, do you mind if I just ask a question? Can I just ask a quick question just to clarify? Actually, it's up to Dr. Mahan and Dr. Trinkle. Are we collaborating, is the school district collaborating with Southernly High Public Library with any curriculum? Because I think Kyle had mentioned that we have all these programs that we're working together on. But can you clarify, are we, are we working together?
I think it is sporadic, not systemic.
I mean, is there direct discussions amongst?
I am not aware of any systemic discussions, but I do know that individual teachers and buildings are having cooperative efforts with.
So there are, so then there is some, I mean.
Meaning, are there, I guess along the same lines, so my understanding, and maybe it's not true anymore, but just for my own knowledge and for everyone, do we still provide like reading lists for the classes, for example, so they have more access to copies, because sometimes it's tough to get them in the classrooms?
So that is going on. Great. Okay.
First, Tom, I didn't want you to leave tonight before expressing the district's gratitude for the great partnership that we do have at so many different levels and so many different ways. So I do want to make that clear that we really have, I think, a very positive relationship with all the competent and great people you have in your township. So first and foremost, I do want to say that. And then secondly, I think we're actually engaging in a discussion of governance here. And I know, and this, I'm not well informed on this issue, but I think that any issue such as this does provide an opportunity for study and planning. And I think Mr. Maud is suggesting, and I would agree, that, you know, I don't think anyone has on the paper a plan right now that could be voted on or that people would be comfortable with one way or the other. But I know that each of our municipalities have board members. To the extent that our board would develop a thought on this as to say, "Look, we need to pursue developing a plan," or "No, we don't want," whatever the, you know, will of the board would happen to be, it may be an opportunity for us to discuss and offer direction to our representative as there may be for the other townships that are represented. And perhaps with support, this would be an issue that might be addressed at the board level, given that we all have some representation? Or is that maybe not sufficient, and there needs to be a broader effort on the part of the district to achieve that?
I think if you want staff, are you saying, or have your board members on the committee?
I was talking about the fact that Southernly High has an appointed board member to the library. Not a member of our board, but I mean, an appointed member of the board. So to an extent that our board would develop a position on this, for example, "Let's see what we can do to develop efficiencies without diminishing service." Then perhaps we would instruct our board member to advance in that path, as might, I think, perhaps Upper Salkin's board members. So again, I think we're happy to help in whatever way we can. But as far as governance, sometimes, you know, a table with 15 people on a committee, when it comes down to really precisely finding out an economy of scale, might be a bit of a challenge. And certainly, we're, I think it's not a stretch to say that we're happy to help because we share your view that our library is so very valuable to our community, and we want it to remain valuable and most definitely sustainable because we are always having those conversations at this level. So just a thought, but the most important thought is thank you for the partnerships that Upper Salkin extends to our school district. We value them greatly.
Thank you very much. I will add one other thing. Last night, tonight, the board adopted its preliminary budget, and it did include the full $326,000 that we contributed this past year to the library. So they are being fully funded, at least in the preliminary budget for 2023. And I know funding was on your agenda. I hope the school board does the same in terms of funding the library as well at the full requested amount. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving to all. Happy Thanksgiving.